Good morning. Oh, good afternoon, actually. We want to welcome you to the beautiful new county operating center. And I hope that we can fit everybody in and we'll apologize to those we can't. This is the room at which our planning commission normally would meet. And it's actually bigger than the chambers in our administrative building on Pacific Highway. So, we want to welcome you here. We hope you, if you have some time, walk around, enjoy the new artwork and the facilities that have been built here over the last few years where we've been putting a lot of people to work. Today, we have a historic day. For the first time in 18 years, we're swearing in a brand-new supervisor. Along with two other supervisors that are... I'm going to acknowledge that the entire Board of Supervisors here and we'll skip the formality of calling the role. But as we traditionally do at these meetings, we will start with an invocation and with a pledge of allegiance. And in a second, I'll be asking you to stand for both of those. But I wanted to first introduce the, our provider of the invocation this morning, a very close friend of mine, Monsignor Dan Dillibow. Monsignor Dillibow is possibly going to be looking for work here shortly because he has served as the spiritual support for San Diego Chargers. I asked him if he was part of the great shakeup that's going on there. But if he's not, I'm asking him to pay particular attention during the next football season because we've got to, we've got to do a little better, even in his role. But if Monsignor Dillibow will join me here at the podium for the invocation, then we will have, following that, the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance. Monsignor?
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, Father of Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, and Jesus, in this new year, we beg your blessings on our San Diego Board of Supervisors and the mission entrusted to them. We ask your benediction upon our nation, our great county and city of San Diego, which you have blessed with so many riches and bounty. We beseech you, Almighty God, to shed your grace on those entrusted, with seeing that your loving care is poured out upon those who are our most vulnerable and most needy in our county and beyond. Give new vision to this board as they seek to bring new jobs, new services, vision, and growth to our region. We praise you at the beginning of 2013 and thank you for the gift of our life and liberty by which we can pursue happiness. Show us anew that happiness is found only in respecting each human person, your creation, and the freedoms you have bestowed. May all your people feel welcome here as those who yearn to breathe free and to pursue happiness in this land of freedom, adding their gifts to those whose families have lived here in this area for so long. Finally, Lord, we beseech your benediction on these supervisors, their staffs, families, and all who seek to serve the common good by establishing just and fair policies, protecting the gift of religious and other freedoms in faith, hope, and love. For we know you are with us today and always, that in you we trust forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Monsignor Dillibow. Please remain standing. We'll have the presentation of the colors. And I'm going to ask that Robert Roberts, who's Dave Roberts's son, come up here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, and you can be seated. I was thinking that maybe we should have made that door just a little higher when we did the planning for this, but it's one of the few things perhaps that, that we've missed. I want to acknowledge a number of elected officials who have allowed us to share this, have been here to share this moment with us. First, I thought I did see them come in, the mayor of San Diego, Mayor Bob Filner. Oceanside Mayor Jim Wood. Santee Mayor Randy Boppel. Chilavista Mayor Cheryl Cox. Imperial Beach Mayor Jim Janney. Chilavista Deputy Mayor Pamela Ben Souza. Escondido Deputy Mayor Olga Diaz. San Diego Council President Todd Gloria. San Diego City Councilman Kevin Faulkner. San Diego City Councilman Scott Sherman. San Diego City Councilman Mark Kersey. I suspect some of these people haven't arrived yet, as I'm not seeing them, but I'll announce them anyway. San Diego City Councilwoman Marty Emerald. Coronado Councilman Al Overm. Del Mar Councilman Don Moser. Del Mar Councilman Lee Haydo. Poway Councilman Jim Cunningham. Sante City Councilman Jack Dale. Solana Beach Councilwoman Lisa Hebner. I know this one's here. San Diego County Sheriff Bill Gore. San Diego County Treasurer-Tax Collector Dan McAllister. San Diego County Assessor Recorder Ernie Dronenberg. San Diego County Board of Education Jerry Rinden. La Mesa Spring Valley School District Rick Reinick. Encinitas Mayor Teresa Barth. Escondido City Councilman, yes, Ed Gallo. And then we have a number of others here. Well, first of all, I got to acknowledge somebody that should have been at the top of this list of others. About-to-be former Supervisor Pam Slater-Price. We have some Port Commissioners here. Bob Nelson, Port Commissioner Bob Nelson. Port Commissioner Dan Malcolm, who I know I saw earlier. Our very esteemed, recently-retired CAO, Mr. Walt Eckert. Told that former Senator Christine Kehoe is our SVP, but I didn't see Chris. Former Assemblywoman Lori Saldana. Former Encinitas Mayor Jerome Stox. And former Port Commissioner David Malcolm. If I've missed anybody, my apologies. Blame it on me. But we're glad that every one of you are here. And we want to start the administration of the oaths. We will be going in the order of the district numbers. So that means our first supervisor will be Supervisor Greg Cox, District One. His oath will be administered by the Honorable Cheryl Cox, who's mayor of the city of Chilavista, and she's here with her two daughters.
I state your name.
I, Greg Cox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That's an awful lot. To the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully, that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Tough act to follow there. You know, I kind of feel like a mosquito at Black's Beach. I just don't know where to begin. It is truly a great privilege for me to be sworn in today to office for another term on the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. There's a lot of people who I want to thank and certainly express my appreciation for this honor, and I want to take this opportunity to give them my deepest and most sincere appreciation. First, I want to acknowledge that it's not possible for any elected official to represent the individuals that they do without the support of their family. And, you know, we're out there working day and night, virtually every day of the week, and without the blessing and support of our families, there's no way that any elected official can do what they are called upon to do. I'd like to thank my wife Cheryl, who has been with me as of last month for 37 years, for her support, support, and certainly devotion and wise counsel. And our two daughters that are here today also, our oldest daughter Elizabeth and our younger daughter Emily, who have really been a source of inspiration to me and certainly have encouraged my involvement in local government over the years. So Cheryl, Elizabeth, Emily, thank you very much. I want to thank the voters of my district, who had to endure much too much partisan bickering this past election cycle. They waded through the messiest part of democracy, and I want to thank them for returning me to a nonpartisan county office where I can now have the opportunity to continue to represent all the people in my district in a nonpartisan manner. I want to thank my constituents, who have been my partners in creating a vibrant quality of life in the very culturally diverse communities of the part of the San Diego County that I'm honored to represent. I pledge to you that the safety of our homes and families will continue to be my highest priority. This is absolutely essential, given the fact that the state is no longer incarcerating all of the criminals who were sentenced to state prison. I want to recognize our Sheriff Bill Gore, our District Attorney Bonnie DeManis, and our Chief Probation Officer Mac Jenkins, and all of the men and women under their command who are partnering with our board to meet and overcome the new challenges we face as the responsibility for incarcerating and monitoring criminals has been shifted to not only this county, but every county in the state of California. I also want to thank Helen Robbins Meyer, our brilliant new Chief Administrative Officer, her extraordinary talented executive team, and the hard-working employees of the county who consistently go above and beyond the call of duty to serve the more than 3 million people that are the residents of this county. I also want to least acknowledge and thank Walt Eckert for his tremendous leadership he's provided over the last 13 and a half years as our former Chief Administrative Officer. As I begin a new term in office, I'm going to do everything I can to create and maintain good jobs in the county and foster the economic growth of our region. We have been, we have so many exciting possibilities here with our port, our border, our high-tech, biotech, and defense sectors, and the small businesses that have always been a part of our mainstay in San Diego County. I firmly believe that the intellectual capital and work ethic that we share in San Diego will certainly overcome the stubborn recession and economic downturns that we've been in for the last couple of years. I want to thank my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, who have proven time and time again their willingness to come together on issues for the public good, who envision and embrace change, whether in the form of identifying a new technology or raising the bar for best practices in running a government. I will continue in a new term to partner with my colleagues on the fiscal discipline and good stewardship of public resources that have allowed us to build reserves and save the taxpayers literally hundreds of millions of dollars by paying cash and avoiding bond debt and interest payments. And as the Supervisor Chairman Ron Roberts just mentioned, this is a perfect example of the type of things that we are investing in in the county and these public facilities, such as this county operations center. I'm very pleased that I'm going to be working with my longtime friend Supervisor Diane Jacob, and I want to thank the voters of District Two for returning her to office. And I look forward to working with my soon-to-be-new colleague Supervisor Dave Roberts. We've also had the, we've already had the opportunity to find many common interests that we share, including our interest in the protection of our beaches and bays and our commitment to the protection of our most valuable resource, our children, particularly those that have had to deal with their placement in foster care and impermanent adoptive homes. I truly look forward to working with him on those issues and many others. I plan to work also with not only them, but our chairman, Ron Roberts, and our Supervisor Bill Horn, to continue making long-term investments in the infrastructure that this county needs. I plan to enhance the recreational amenities in the regional parks in South County, continue the progress on the iconic Bay Shore Bike Way, and make sure that San Diego County segment of the California Coastal Trail gets the attention that it deserves. I also want to at least acknowledge and again thank Supervisor Pam Slater-Price for her commitment to this county over these last 20 years. It's been an honor to work with you also, Pam. Thank you. Our board has built many new libraries, including in my district, the new Benita Sunnyside Library that was opened a couple of years ago, a brand-new one, the Lincoln Acres Library that'll be opening up later this month in the unincorporated community that's kind of surrounded by national cities. In this term, my focus will be on partnering with the city of Imperial Beach, a small city with a big heart and a big wish for a new library, and I'm looking forward to working with the city of Imperial Beach and others to make that dream become a reality in the next couple of years. I want to strengthen the health and social services safety net, especially for children who are abused or neglected by their own biological parents and are now dependent on the county for good adoptive and foster homes, on educational opportunities at the San Pasquale Academy, and for the thousands of grandparents who are struggling to raise their young children, grandchildren, in a rapidly changing world. I want to make sure that those grandparents have access to all of the resources that we have available in the community to help them in that endeavor. They need and deserve our support. Progress in this region depends on the collaborative attitudes and the actions taken by the county and all the cities in the region. I want to thank the city's leaders in the region for working so productively with my office over these last couple of years, and I look forward to forging new partnerships in my new term. The close working relationships among the South County cities produce a good result for the people in my district. I especially want to thank the new city of San Diego Mayor Bob Filner for joining us today and for his commitment to partnering closely with the county for the good of all of the people that we serve in this region. That will be critical during the many issues that we'll be dealing with, particularly during disaster situations, when we need to coordinate emergency response and public communications. I want to thank my very competent and professional staff, who know the county, know the first district, and know how to assist me in making sure that my priorities and my commitments to the district are fulfilled. And that includes my Chief of Staff Pam Slater, excuse me, Pam, Pam O'Neill. He's right over there. And also, the balance of my staff, Michael de la Rosa, Luis Montegudo, Danny Melgoza, Greg Murphy, Cheryl Cruz, and Mary Lou Estrada. They've been a part of my team for a good number of years, and they are a great team. And I want to thank you for attending this event today, for your civic commitment and your interest in county government. Now, tomorrow, we're going to have a kind of our annual reorganization of the Board of Supervisors, and if I can count on at least two other friends up there to support me, I may be the next chairman of the Board of Supervisors. If that happens, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite all of you to come to the Annual State of the County address, which will be held on Wednesday, February 13th, at 6:30 PM on the USS Midway, when I can share with you some of my vision for the county in 2013. And I guarantee you, there's going to be a great reception with a lot of good food and drink. With that, I thank you very much for your attendance. I thank you very much for your support, for being here today, and I look forward to very, very productive next four years working with this Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much. What a shameless plug for a State of the County address. But the surprise announcement that Pam Slater-Price was going to be his Chief of Staff. And you thought this was all just sort of by road. Well, with that, we will now go to the Supervisor-elect for District Number Two, Supervisor Diane Jacob. Her oath is going to be administered by Chief Tom Porter from Cal Fire. Chief Supervisor.
All right, raising your right hand. I state your name.
I, Diane Jacob.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mal.
Without.
Reservation.
Without any.
Mental reservation. Thanks for saving me. Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Being the sixth time, I know that, by heart, I can tell you. First, I want to thank my husband, Paul, and Cheryl and Greg, eat your heart out. We celebrated 51 years of marriage in December. Now, I have to tell you, we were very, very young when we got married, too. And Chief Porter, I want to thank you especially for being here, too. It's a great honor for me to have not only the chief of Cal Fire, but Tom Porter is also the fire chief of the San Diego County Fire Authority. So thank you again for coming and swearing me in. Now, Chief, what about that new state fire tax? Been meaning to talk to you about that. Well, folks, I can tell you, I am raring to go and I'm raring to start term number six. I'm excited today as I was in 1993, when I first came into office, and that's when Pam Slater-Price and I joined together in joining this board. I have to tell you, I'm very humbled, I'm very grateful, I'm very honored. And starting next month, I will have the distinction of being the first woman that has served the longest on the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. However, change is coming, and I think most of you today know that. We have a, I have to say, some people thought you would never be seeing any kind of change on this Board of Supervisor. But for this first time in two decades, it's very exciting to me to welcome a new member of our board. And yes, Pam, I will miss you, but I also am very excited about welcoming Supervisor Dave Roberts to our board. Dave, congratulations, and I really look forward to working with you. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of work ahead of this Board of Supervisors. Fire protection remains one of my top priorities. And the county today, I have to tell you, has a stronger, more cohesive firefighting force than we've ever had before. We put together a San Diego County Fire Authority, which covers 1.5 million acres, and if you can envision the entire size of the county, geographically, that's about half the size of the county. And it's where a lot of those fires start, the big ones, we know too well. The County Board of Supervisors has invested over $250 million over time to make this region safer. And we invested that money in fire stations, equipment, many improvements, including keeping 50 fire stations in that 1.5 million acre area open full-time and response times, day in and day out, 24/7, 365 days a year, which means quicker response to those fires, get them out while they're small, quicker response to those emergency medical calls. Cal Fire has been a great partner in our efforts with many of the changes that we've made. And Chief Porter, I ask you to swear me in today because of a recognition of the teamwork that we've had with Cal Fire. Thank you, Chief. And I want a big thank you to all of those men and women who are out there, day in and day out, working to keep our neighborhood safe and to keep us safe. day out, working to keep our neighborhood safe and to keep us safe in our communities. My goal in the coming years will be to make this region the best prepared that we can possibly be, not just for fire, but for any kind of emergency. And so, what's next? What do we do next? We've done a lot, what's next? We need to complete the consolidation, particularly of our rural fire agencies within this 1.5 million acre area that I mentioned. That will help us to be more efficient and better coordinate our services in our most fire-prone areas. We must also build on our efforts to make our neighborhoods safer. In my district, a new sheriff's station will be coming this year in Ranch of San Diego. We'll continue to combat the gang activities and the human trafficking and the many issues that are confronting our children today. And for the very first time, and this is historic, we're working with the city of San Diego to upgrade and finally integrate our communication system, our emergency communication system. This is significant. This is a first. I hope more to come, and the county and the city being able to work together on these important issues. In addition, I'm really looking forward to working with Mayor Bob Filner and my new colleague, Supervisor Dave Roberts, on energy issues. I think we have a lot of opportunities in coming forward with some very bold proposals that are not only smart, but will serve the people and our businesses better and cheaper. Clean, efficient solar panels. Add, if we could have solar on every rooftop and business in San Diego County. Think about that for a minute. It would help make us energy efficient without ruining our backcountry areas. This month, I'm very excited to tell you that I'm having solar panels installed on my home in Hamul. And I look forward, I can't tell you how much, but I really look forward to not having to pay SDGNE an electricity bill. In addition, I want to continue to build recreational facilities for our kids, conserve our precious open spaces to build parks, riding and hiking trails, and yes, build that library in Alpine. The board's adoption last year, finally, of our general plan update, which is our guiding land use document, it's going to help us retain the beauty and the character of our backcountry communities while planning for what I consider to be responsible growth. 20 years ago, I felt a deep passion about the hard work ahead of me, and I promised to fight for the people, not just in my district, but in this entire county, and particularly the taxpayers, the people who pay the bills. My passion remains, my commitment remains. I feel as strongly about the fiscal disciplines and the changes that we brought to county government as I do today. And to the people in District Two, just know, I am here to serve you, the people, and make county government work for you. That's my job. So to the folks and all those supporters and family and all that are here today and those who are not, a big thank you to all of you for putting your faith and your trust in me for all these years. I want to also thank my outstanding staff. Jeff Collins, who's been with me for 15 years, is my chief of staff. Although I do have in the audience, honored to say, I have two, three former chiefs of staff, Mary Ball, Jeff Patno, and Adam Day. And I thank you for your work and your help in guiding me and getting me where I am today. And for my current staff, besides Jeff, my two senior policy advisors, Adam Wilson, Bob Spanbauer, and then Alice Ree, if you ever want to schedule anything with my office, Alice is fantastic, but she's the go-to person, so be nice to her. And then Mary Lou Glassman, who sits on my front desk. So if you call my office, which a lot of people do, that Mary Lou is the one that has the most gracious, wonderful way about her, and I thank you for that, Mary Lou. And then Janice Downs, Amber Tarek, and then Steve Schmidt, who is the newest member of my staff. A big thank you to all of you. I cannot do it without you. I also want to take a moment to thank, and I would ditto everybody that Greg had thanked, too. I won't go through that list, but a special thank you to our new chief administrative officer, Helen Robbins Meyer. And a big thank you to our management team and all of our county employees for all their hard work that they do every day, and particularly for the strict fiscal discipline that you demonstrate. And to my colleagues on the board for your support on so many, many issues. You know, it's not only great to start a new term with a new chief administrative officer, although Walt did a fabulous job, but she's the first woman in the history of county government. We started back in 1850, first woman chief administrative officer for the county, Helen. She is phenomenal. And not only that, but I like Helen, too, because she's going to keep me company with the boys on the board. Well, I'm ready to go again, I'm raring to go again, and I thank you very, very much. So let's get to work.
Supervisor Jacob mentioned solar panels, and you're probably looking around here and thinking, what about the county? And you did all this new construction. There is an organization that grades buildings on their efficiency. And when you look out, those new office buildings out there are all LEED certified at the gold level, which is very, very hard. But better yet, look around this room, and you'll see different kinds of lighting, you'll see a little bit, if you know what to look for, you'll see something very different. This is one of the very few LEED-certified platinum buildings in this whole entire county of San Diego, the very highest rating. If you have a chance, you can go upstairs, and you'll see a roof garden that not only insulates, but saves water and all other sorts of things going on. So I said, take a little tour while you're out here and enjoy. Now, I also mentioned that it was likely that I'd probably missed somebody, and I was given a little time for everybody to notify me that who I may have missed. And fortunately, it was only one person, and I want to acknowledge Kevin Beiser from the San Diego Unified School District Board. And with that, I want to introduce our third supervisor representing District Number Three, whose oath is going to be administered by Harold M. Koning, a retired rear admiral, our newest supervisor, Dave Roberts.
I think she was family. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Dave Roberts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear. That I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
I'm deeply appreciative of your attendance at today's ceremony. To me, your attendance here today makes a strong statement that you care not only about our county, but also about who is leading our county. Your involvement is important to me, and I know that it's important to my new colleagues, Greg, Diane, Bill, and Ron on the Board of Supervisors, and also to our staff led by Helen, and Don, and Thomas. Thank you all very much. I don't think it would be right to start my remarks today without pausing for a moment and remembering a great San Diegan who we just lost and who many people are actually at his service right now, and that is Murray Galinson. Murray had wanted to be here today. We actually were going to be getting together next Tuesday, and unfortunately, the Lord took him too quickly. And if we could just pause for a moment to remember Murray Galinson and how much he meant to all of us. Thank you. I'd like to begin by extending a few thank yous. First, I'd like to thank Rear Admiral Harold Koenig, the former United States Naval Surgeon General and Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense for Health Affairs. I have known Admiral Koenig for over 20 years, and I did not realize after I won, but each supervisor, when they're sworn in, can pick somebody who you want to administer the oath. And I thought, who better than Admiral Koenig? Somebody that I worked with to help create the TRICARE Military Healthcare System, somebody that's passionate about veterans and Veterans Village of San Diego, that you lead their Board of Directors. I'm just so honored that you're here today, and you can be assured that all of us on the board are passionate about veterans' issues and our military, and the importance that it makes to our county. Thank you, Admiral Koenig. Of course, you saw my family here today, and one of them actually stole a note off the dais, but I know what it said. But Wally, thank you for putting up with all my extracurricular activities to allow me to do that. And my oldest son, Robert, who led the pledge of allegiance today, I'm very proud of you. And our next son is Alex, and then Julian, and then Joe, and then Natalie, our youngest, our four-year-old daughter. I thank you all. I know how much you enjoyed campaigning, and they really did. They asked me after the primary if they could continue to go sign-waving with me. They love to wave signs. So thank you all very much for being here and putting up with all my activities. I'm also honored to have here with me today my boss for the last 10 years, and now I have to say, my former boss and my friend, Carla Smith and her daughter Serena and her husband Jeff David. If you'd stand. Carla gave me the flexibility, please. Carla gave me the flexibility for the last 10 years to pursue my interests. And I know one of our colleagues, Joyce Sensmeyer, is here also from San Marcos. But I cannot thank you and HIMSS, my employer, for the last 10 years for allowing me to do what I'm passionate about, not only to help improve the healthcare system using information technology, but to allow me to pursue my public policy activities. So I thank you very much. I thank all our guests and elected officials here. Bob, I'm so thrilled that you are here with us today, my colleague Lisa from Solana Beach, and everybody. But I think there, oh, I also want to thank all my passionate, energetic, dedicated supporters, including my purple shirt friends over here. But thank you all very much. My campaign team led by Roger Boyd and Gary Gartner, all the volunteers, the firefighters, teachers, labor, environmentalists, retirees, college students, you all know what you meant to this campaign and to winning a seat on this board. We did it with a bipartisan coalition, and I was just at the San Diego Botanic Gardens this weekend, and three people came up to me and said, I voted for you, and I did it because you were vouched for by the current supervisor. And of course, I would not be standing here were it not for that current supervisor and her courage and vision. Pam is leaving her district and our county in better shape than when she started her service over 20 years ago. I'm forever grateful for her support and guidance, for having the, I know I'm not supposed to use the word, but for having the guts and the courage to come and really look at who you felt was the best candidate and to help me win this seat. So thank you very much. And I wish you'd all join me in a round of applause for Pam Slater Price. Well, needless to say, it's a new day in San Diego County. Today, we turn the page to a new chapter in the 162-year history book of San Diego County. I'm the first new supervisor in 18 years, the first member of that next generation of leaders on our County Board of Supervisors. And I know I'm joining a great team of people, one that has turned this county around. And I believe I'm bringing a new activist perspective on some issues and a shared vision on other issues. And to all my new colleagues on the board, I pledge I'll work with you to make our county even better. We may disagree on occasion, but I pledge that I will not be disagreeable. And I've already begun working with a number of organizations and individuals, some that supported me and some that didn't. I think it's important, and those that have known me throughout my career, I try to bring people together for the common good. And we've already begun meeting to talk about issues. But I remember at the end of the day, and Pam taught me this, Diane said this, at the end of the day, it's you all that are my boss. And particularly in my case, you all that are from the Third District. I will never forget that, but I pledge to all San Diegans that I will work for everybody throughout the county to do what I think is in the best interest of the county of San Diego. So thank you. I also wanted to highlight that Jess Durfee is here, and Jess is the head of the San Diego And I will say, many people questioned, was I the right candidate for this seat? And I went and I talked to Jess and many other people, and I said, I really believe that we can win this seat and that I want the opportunity to do it. And I talked to many, many people about that, and Jess, you and the party, I thank you for putting your support behind me, and to all the others that don't belong to Jess and my party, thank you for also supporting me. So let me share with you just briefly, five of my So let me share with you just briefly five of my goals for the coming year. First, I pledge to continue our county's commitment to strong fiscal discipline. I won't be afraid to support wise investments that pay dividends into the future. I'll ensure that we maintain our high bond rating. I'll always protect the taxpayers, defend the ratepayers, and ensure that those who are eligible for county services have the opportunity to receive county services. Second, as the father of five adopted children, I've experienced firsthand how the county's foster care system operates. I'm going to review the county's foster care and adoption programs, working with my colleagues, to ensure that they're not only working for our most vulnerable citizens, our children, but they're also working for both biological and foster parents alike. It's important that we find the right balance to protect our children. Third, I'm going to work to protect and sustain our fragile environment, and I truly agree with our former supervisor, Pam Slater Price, this is only our true legacy, protecting and sustaining our environment, and I'm going to work hard to support the San Diego River Park, the Santa Lejo Lagoon, the Escondido Creek, the Los Penasquitos, the Mission Trails, and all the other open space parks throughout the county. It is critical that we maintain this balance. Fourth, I'm going to work to protect our neighborhoods from overdevelopment, but I'm going to support good land use planning. I'll ensure that we have sufficient opportunities for public input prior to decisions being made by the County Board of Supervisors. And fifth, I think quality of life must be front and center, and so I'm going to support quality libraries, arts and culture, animal shelters, and smart transit solutions. Specifically, I believe that we can invigorate our county's solar industry. I agree wholeheartedly with what Supervisor Diane Jacob talked about, and I think we can do this with almost no government involvement, it's just a few tweaks of policy here in the county. We can reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, we can build our solar industry to create local, good-paying jobs. I also plan to investigate the creation of a countywide alternative utility service initiative that provides 100% green energy alternatives. And I've already been talking to Supervisor Diane Jacob about this, and I know we're just very, very passionate about this issue. There are many other issues that deserve our attention, the economy, traffic, better delivery of county services, and I look forward to addressing all these issues. If you saw me on TV the other night, I kind of showed the initial briefing books, and I'm told this is kind of a light week for the county board, and the briefing books were very daunting to me, reading through them, and I was actually at the Carmel Valley Skate Park on both days this weekend with my briefing books as my boys and daughter were there skating, but I did get through them all and had great briefings this morning by the staff. So let me conclude by pledging that you can always count on me and trust me to do my very best for the public good. Our county has many resources. We have a great location, a great climate, we have a strong military presence, the highest veterans population, we have a high-tech and biotech community, tourism, and the diversity of our people. But sometimes we overlook one of our greatest resources, and that's our county staff. I'm going to not take the county staff for granted. To the almost 15,000 county employees who each day provide superior service, I salute you, I respect you, I deeply appreciate the job that each of you do so seamlessly for the public. Without you, we, your county board, will not be successful. In following our reception today as my first act as your newest supervisor, I plan to visit with as many county employees as I can at your work sites. I want to come to your offices and to say thank you. An unknown author once said, "When we dream alone, it's only a dream. But when we dream together, it's the beginning of a new reality." So let us begin that new reality today as we return to that next chapter in the history of San Diego County. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. Thank you all, and may God bless San Diego County and all our fine people.
With that, excuse me, I have just two last announcements, and I'm seeing the mayor of Escondido sitting out there, who was, I missed, Sam, welcome, thank you for joining us, and I hope there's nobody else, but I'm seeing a different crowd from here. And then, secondly, I just want to share with you, we're having a reception out in front of the building following these ceremonies, and they are aptly concluded, and we thank you for joining us here this afternoon. We're dismissed.